Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Huron City Council Special Meeting of April 4, 2017.
The consent agenda consists of one item this evening, and that is authorization to hold an executive session. I've received no requests for removal. Council, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Council, please vote. And it is unanimous. We will now adjourn to executive session.
...
Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you? Bought you a fur coat for Christmas, diamond ring, big Cadillac car and everything. What makes me treat you the way that I do? Gee. Baby, ain't I good to you?
This meeting will now come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Potena.
Here.
Councilmember Binzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
And Councilmember Leone.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria Council. Special meeting this evening, April 4th, 2017. We have one item on our study session agenda this evening, and we are honored to welcome Brigadier General Brooke Leonard, Commander of the 56th Fighter Wing, Luke Air Force Base, here with us today. So, Mr. Swinson, would you care to start?
Well, and you've already broken the ice by introducing our Speaker Mayor, thank you. And Thomas Atkins, our Intergovernmental Affairs Director, will do a further introduction. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Swinson. Mayor and Council, it is my distinct honor this evening to introduce Brigadier General Brooke Leonard, Commander of the 56th Fighter Wing at Luke Air Force Base. As you'll recall, General Leonard took over Commander of the 56th last summer, and really since day one, has been very active in meeting with our community members in the West Valley. In fact, this is his second visit to the city since he took over. In his role as Commander of the 56th Fighter Wing, General Leonard is tasked with training and educating, preparing, the world's finest fighter pilots. And there's a great legacy at Luke of producing the world's best. General Leonard is actually a graduate from the F-16 training there earlier in his career. So, just an example of the type of training that's been there historically. Additionally, General Leonard, in charge of Commander of the 56th overseas and has stewardship over the Berry Goldwater Range, which is where most of the military aircraft in Arizona do their training. The Grange is really the keystone of all the military installations in Arizona, and really is the... protecting the range is how we protect the viability of most of our missions, because they have a place to train. So, without further ado, I'll introduce or turn it over to the general, who's going to provide an update on the missions that are happening at Luke Air Force Base, including the F-35 program. So, without further ado, General Leonard.
Hello? Oh, there we go. Maybe too low. I don't know if I can talk sitting down very well, so I appreciate you having me here. Mayor Carlet, thank you for inviting me out once again, and to the whole council, just thank you for your support to Luke Air Force Base. It's our desire to not only be in the community, but to be a part of the community. And so, it's with great privilege and just really thankfulness that I come before you today, just to talk a little bit about Luke Air Force Base and what we're doing out there, ways we can partner and answer any questions that you have. This is your air force, and so I'm proud to be able to present it to you today. So, on behalf of the 5600 airmen, and really upwards to 200,000 military retirees, their families, and all the people stationed there in this area that we serve, it's truly a privilege to come before you, so I thank you for that. I really want to impress upon you today three things, three big things. First of all, we love people. We love developing airmen and training fighter pilots. The second thing is, we cherish our relationship with the community, and particularly with the city of Peoria. You guys have been champions in so many ways and leaders across the entire West Valley, and you have done so much to allow us to operate the largest fighter wing in the world inside the fifth-largest metropolitan area, and that's no easy task. And so, thank you for just an incredible amount of team effort. And then, the third thing is, as we go forward, we like to say, "This is your air force," and at Luke Air Force Base, we're not even halfway there yet. And I'll unpack that a little bit as we go, but I think every good briefing starts off with a great video, so if we could play that, this will show you just a little bit about our heritage and history.
From the very beginnings in 1943, when the heroes of the 56th filled the skies with the debris of enemy aircraft, those veteran pilots began a tradition that remains today. Knowledge, skill, and a fighting spirit were their trademarks. The powerful P-47 became their namesake, and showing the way to young warfighters was their legacy. Through the decades, the names and locations changed in peace and combat. From the Thunderbolt, to the Phantom, to the Viper. And teaching new pilots became their mission, a mission that led them to fighter country. Chosen for the wide-open spaces and named for a local hero, Luke Air Force Base is renowned for training and the community that supports it. It began over 70 years ago with a simple mission: Train the world's greatest fighter pilots. Starting with the AT-6 Texan through the jet age, that mission brought thousands of young pilots from around the world, developing their skills in the classroom and over the expansive Sonoran Desert. Home to the 56th Fighter Wing, where the pride and talent of diverse support groups and squadrons join to achieve the same standard: Deploying mission-ready warfighters. Today, the 56th Fighter Wing and Luke Air Force Base stand ready for a new generation, a new legacy, and a new Thunderbolt. A revolutionary aircraft, bringing unprecedented capability to the air force, a base ready to begin a new era, and the Thunderbolts prepared to embark on a new mission: Training
Luke Air Force Base, we like to think about our history and heritage. We feel like history makes us smarter, and our heritage makes us prouder. And we are named after Frank Luke Jr., and one of the neatest things about him is, he did something really difficult and something that really made a difference. And that's, in a lot of ways, embedded into our DNA every single day. In terms of something difficult, he basically figured out how to attack German observation balloons. Something before that, we had no idea. They were very valuable, highly guarded, but they also gave a lot of intelligence to the enemy, but he found a way to bring them down. In terms of something difficult, like I mentioned before, having the largest fighter wing in the United States and really in the world, inside the fifth-largest metropolitan area, that's something difficult. But that's something this community tackles each and every day. And in terms of something that makes a difference, so after his final flight, where he was actually shot down, and then on the ground continued to fight the German soldiers that eventually ended his life, it was in this small town outside Merveaux, France. And our vice wing commander, a couple of years ago, actually got to go back and was admiring a statue that they erected in honor of Frank Luke Jr. And an old gentleman from the town came up to him and relayed the story of that day told to him by his father. And at the end of that story, he said, "Because of what you have done, freedom and justice will live in my country forever." And I'll tell you, that's what we try to do each and every day. We try to make that difference at Luke Air Force Base. And so, to kind of spell out that difference, I like to look back at kind of how it all started. And so, in 1939, as we were kind of watching Germany and Hitler kind of storm across Europe, our nation was producing 1,200 fighter pilots a year. And then, in 1940, basically as the Battle of Britain waged, and we wondered, would we lose a critical foothold in Europe? We upped our pilot production to 12,000 fighter pilots a year. And then, in 1941, when it became personal in the Japanese bomb Pearl Harbor, and we basically declared war and committed the full weight of our nation, we upped our pilot production to 30,000. Then President Roosevelt dedicated Luke Air Force Base, Thunderbird Field, and the Berryam Goldwater Range, as mentioned earlier, and ever since then, for the last 75 years, that has been our business, to develop the world's greatest fighter pilots and to basically make sure that we fight the enemy abroad. We have been at war, kind of in this current period, ever since Desert Storm. Since 1991, your air force has not come home. A lot of the other forces were able to redeploy, but as the United States Air Force, we have been constantly committed for the last 26 years, and we will continue to do so, and Luke Air Force Base and this community partnership feeds and enables that in a very powerful way. And so, with that, I wanted to share with you guys, really, our cornerstone document. It's our mission, our vision, and our beliefs. And the reason I'd like to share that with you is because this is really at the heart of who we are, and also because you're family. And it also reflects the community and the relationships that we're a part of. And so, really, this is all of our mission, all of our vision and our beliefs that we share. And so, with that, our mission is to build the future of air power. We look at air power as things and people and tactics, and we do all of that out at Luke Air Force Base. We believe that we need a future look, to look at where we're going, to make sure that we're set up for success, and I'll get into how we've done that and kind of where we are in terms of halfway through, and unpack that a little bit for you later on. Our vision is that we're going to lead the air force in developing airmen and training fighter pilots. And so, in terms of developing airmen, they're our most valuable resource, and so we spend a lot of time, particularly on leadership and training and adding to who they are. We believe that great people make great airmen, make great citizens, and a lot of folks will transition and decide to make Arizona their home, and we believe that we can add to that in a very powerful way as well. And in terms of our belief, we value people before ideas and things, so we like to be innovative, but we, again, we recognize the person as our most important resource. We are also leaders, and we work best in teams, and I've seen that just incredibly from your mayor and from the city of Peoria for so many years, that leadership, being that champion for Luke Air Force Base and getting everybody on board. On our coin, I have 16 stars on the very front, and they represent the 11 mayors, our county, our state, and then our three outbases adds up to 16, and that's so important, that teamwork for what we do each and every day. The third thing is, we have a focus on our culture with a campaign mindset, and we've also appreciated that from the relationship. Short-term, you could say, "Boy, they make a lot of noise," but in the long-term, there is a lot of combat readiness that goes on out at Luke Air Force Base, and you contribute to that in a very powerful, powerful way. The fourth belief there is that we communicate, prioritize, and solve problems, and that's another thing that I've appreciated about the... And that's another thing that I've appreciated about this relationship. We don't just admire the problem, or say, "Hey, we really appreciate you guys, because you salute the American flag." It's something that we feel. And when there is a problem that comes up, we work together in a very powerful way to solve that problem, that adds mutual gain to kind of everybody that's in and around Luke Air Force Base. And so, thank you for that. And then, last but not least, we believe that we can change the Air Force from right at Luke Air Force Base, right inside the 56th Fighter Wing. I get calls all the time. "How do you have such a great relationship with your community?" And I start off with, "We have a great community," so that makes it easy. But we do have some very valuable and unique things that we do. We have a community initiatives team. Rusty Mitchell, Barb, and Chris, who are here with me in the audience, they are a part of full-time, salaried employees that look after this relationship and care and feed it. And so, we think that's a key component to what we do. But that's kind of the cornerstone of what we do. It influences our decisions and just everything that we do each and every day. I show you this picture right here, not only to say again that our community initiatives team down there at the bottom is really awesome, but also Chaz Buchanan, who manages our range office and the Barium Goldwater Range. And so, everybody in that slide, the really important people are the two at the bottom. And that, again, those are our relationship folks. Those are the folks that are stewards of our most valuable resources. Next, we just wanted to talk a little bit about what we call Thunderbolt Nation. There's a lot of us, and we're kind of all over the map, maybe in some areas that you haven't recently heard about. So, we have about 5,600 active duty, but they spread across lots of different jobs and things that they do out there. We also have a tremendous amount of civilians and contractors. Right now, Lockheed Martin provides over 400 people that help us with the maintenance and instruction in the F-35. And so, we have a very varied team, if you will. But that's all important to what we need to do. We also have folks in Holloman, near Almagordo, New Mexico, and up at Kingsley, up in Oregon. And so, there are other folks from the 56th Fighter Wing in several different states. And right now, we have 319 airmen deployed. And so, we also send folks downrange into combat pretty much each and every day. And then, we also treat a tremendous amount of patients in our medical group clinic. And so, we're involved in the community and support in many different ways. There's a lot that goes on, and we really could not do that without the 944th, which is our reserve component. And so, they're a wing that's part of Luke Air Force Base, and they also help in training, maintaining, and supporting everything that we do. And you can kind of see some statistics. Over 40% of our F-16 IPs and about 20% of our F-35 instructor pilots are reservists, but they also work in our personnel section, in our support section, and our maintenance section. And so, thanks to all the community business leaders, because a reservist usually has a part-time job in the community, but also has a part-time job with us. And they're so supportive of what our reservists do. They allow them the flexibility to come work, to help us out during surge times. And so, that's another great part of our community relationship. Here's kind of a picture of kind of where we are as a combined 56th Fighter Wing and 944th Fighter Wing. So, we're all over, you know, the nation, from coast to coast. And what you get out of that is, over 50% of the fighter pilots in the United States Air Force is produced by the 56th Fighter Wing. 66% of the world's F-35 pilots, and that's the world's F-35 pilots, because we have international training. Almost all of the F-16 pilots, and that's the most engaged fighter in combat right now. And then, 100% of the F-15 pilots. And so, the contribution of this relationship is huge to our United States Air Force. The Barium Goldwater Range, as Thomas mentioned, is really another just gemstone in our capability to train. I mentioned earlier about the pilots and that we annexed kind of that area down south to do training, and President Roosevelt, as we basically tripled our production to 30,000 a year. Well, they started out on that range. You know what they did? They did skeet practice, to teach the young pilots how to basically shoot in lead of a target. That was about 10 yards away. And then, they graduated and flew airplanes, and they basically shot from about 100 yards away. Today, on the Barium Goldwater Range in the F-35, they practice engaging targets starting at over 100 miles away. And so, having airspace and ground space underneath that, to train both of those things simultaneously is so valuable to us, and what makes Luke Air Force Base such an incredible training platform. So, not only the Air Force Base, but also the range base to the south is critical to what we do. This slide really should be titled "The Thank You Slide." And what I mean by that is, this represents our noise contours. And there is state law, I'm sure you guys are all familiar, protecting the area around Luke Air Force Base. And without this guarantee, the Air Force would not have been able to really manage both its long-range planning and its finances to do what they have done by placing and getting ready to build up to six F-35 squadrons. So, currently, we're at two full squadrons. We have a third one stood up. They actually got their first airplane two weeks ago. We're up to 51 F-35s out on our ramp, and we're going to continue to grow to 144. And so, that's why I say we're not halfway there yet. Eventually, we'll have six full F-35 squadrons, and we'll probably have one or two out of the four F-16 squadrons that we currently have at Luke Air Force Base. But this gift is unlike any other gift. So, last year, I got to travel around with the Secretary of the Air Force. I was her senior military executive officer, and I got to see 93 different Air Force bases and 93 different community relations. And this is the only one that had a state law that protected what they did. The rest of the time, the wing commander had to fight and claw each and every day to make sure that he could protect both the ingress and egress corridors, and just the noise that we kind of produce. And I'll tell you, out of those 93 communities, I can honestly tell you, this is the best one in terms of the relationships. Not only in terms of what is actually done each day, but just the commitment to long-range planning. And so, as the story goes, Eglin Air Force Base was the very first F-35 base. And the Air Force dedicated a lot of money building the simulators, and the hangars, and everything that goes into F-35 training. They built up the facilities probably to house three to four F-35 squadrons. And then, the community relationships kind of fell apart. And fortunately for us, the Air Force looked into other places to put an F-35 wing, and they looked at Luke Air Force Base, and you know what they liked the best? Even better than the incredible range, even better than the facilities we have on Luke. They valued the community relationship and the promise of that state law. Because now, we can bring in a simulator building that will have up to 12 simulators. Currently, we have eight, and we'll be building to 12 this summer. And then, all the other infrastructure associated with six fighter squadrons, that's quite a lot. But they knew that they could commit the money ahead of time, because they knew that we had the commitment from the community to continue to build that out. Frankly, the space at Eglin is wasted right now, and at Luke, it's just continuing to expand. And that's what the relationship allowed us to do, and that's why I like to call this "The Thank You Slide." Fighter Country Partnership is also another unit that I really like to say thank you to a lot. And this is really just another piece of the incredible relationship that we have. So, not only our community initiatives team, but Fighter Country Partnership and our honorary commander program. Many folks and business leaders throughout Peoria take advantage of this, and this is just another way that we showcase your Air Force to the folks inside of Arizona and the valley itself. We've done a lot, and I just wanted to highlight some things that we've done with your support, and where we are kind of going. So, this is just a list of some innovation and some greatest hits that this partnership has enabled. The Luke Valley Leadership and Development Center, like I talked about, we really want to develop airmen. So, we are teaming with folks downtown, profit, nonprofit organizations to build leaders. We're also doing that on the technical side. In fact, we have some of our food service airmen learning from some chefs downtown, and they're bringing those skills back to our airmen to create better meals, and just to really grow as an individual, to be able to develop their talents. And that's a partnership that we have with the community that makes our airmen better. We're doing lots of things. I want to highlight that fourth bullet right there. So, the picture and the fourth bullet go together. That's us in the Cardinals Stadium. That's on January 5th. We came back and we dedicated this year to be a year of service. We wanted to serve our community and serve each other. And one of the big things that we're going to do on the 16th of June is, we're basically going to shut down the base, except for maybe a couple guards here and there, and a couple emergency personnel. And we are going to go out and serve our community for one whole day, and that'll be our entire wing. And that's just our way of saying thank you and giving back. We have some other details there. Our P-4 programs, which is our private, private, private-public partnerships, are yielding some incredible results, incredible teamwork, mutually beneficial solutions to recycling, to law enforcement facilities. Luke Days, we're even looking and partnering on that. And again, there's just ways we can make things better by working together. We have a lot of other things going on. I talked about our airplanes that we just got. Now, we have the Japanese, and we're training them. We just finished training the Israelis on our foreign military sales, and so, they're getting ready to go home. And then, we also have other partner nations as well. We have the Australians, we have the Italians, and we have the Norwegians. And we'll soon get Turkey and folks from Denmark. And so, we're continuing to build out that partnership, and that's really huge for us. Another thing we did that's very important is, we started our first B course, so our basic course, or you might hear it called our initial qualification training. So, up until now, what we've done to build the F-35 program is, we've taken folks that have flown other aircraft, and we've taught them how to fly the F-35. Now, we're taking folks that have never flown a fighter plane before and teaching them to fly the F-35. One of the issues with that is, there's only one seat. So, the first time they do it, they're doing it all by themselves. And so, I was a little bit nervous, and I kind of said, "Hey, make sure you bring it back." But they did awesome. And it's just, that's really to show you kind of the health of the program, because unless we can grow from within, from the bottom, and bring in new people, this program can't continue to accelerate. And so, we have our very first B course. They'll graduate on the 4th of August, and we'll continue to have hundreds and hundreds of folks coming after them, just like we've had in the F-16, the F-15, the F-4. I could go on and on and on throughout the years. So, this is where pilot training takes place, and it's taken place in the F-35 in powerful ways. So, there's a lot going on. I would like to also highlight our integrated firefighter response. That's been something that's been ongoing. But we actually respond to calls within a five-mile radius of the base. It's, you know, totally on our own, not just necessarily when someone needs help. And it gives our airmen incredible training. They actually get on-scene commander, they get to handle sometimes really bad situations, and that just makes them better firefighters, better airmen. And so, we're thankful for that opportunity as well. And our nurses down in Scottsdale, they get to train in a trauma center. So, before they go off into combat, they actually get to see real trauma at a very personal level, and it makes them just better at not only their job, but actually taking care of all our military members that they'll care for downrange. And so, again, just a community, partnership, and teaming throughout the valley is just very powerful. So, on this slide, I wanted to start it off with an elementary school question. And what I heard was, there's like the five Cs of the Arizona economy. So, I didn't go to school, in elementary school in Arizona, but I guess it's like copper, citrus, climate, cotton, cattle. See, yep, she was paying attention in fifth grade. But I would like to add a sixth C to the Arizona economy, and that's combat readiness. And so, I think that's really important. And when you look at Arizona as a whole, the military and the capabilities and the things that they have here add $10.2 billion across the entire state. And we're coming out with our numbers. They've been around $2 billion. I think on the next one, they'll be about the same, but that's going to continue to grow as we grow out our six F-35 squadrons. So, the Super Bowl bought about $500,000 of economic impact, so we do four Super Bowls every year, all the time. And so, again, just an incredible partnership overall between us and the community. The next thing I'd like to cover is just kind of the training. We've been kind of talking about it in pieces and parts, but there's a lot more than fighter pilots and nurses that we train. We also train laboratory technicians. And all these different training classes, I think, really show the diversity of Luke, but they also show the importance of the community itself. And you'll see that folks spend varied amount of times at Luke. So, sometimes it's as short as three weeks, sometimes it's as long as 13 months for our students. And then, for our permanent party, sometimes it's long as 20 years. I ran into an airman who had only been at Luke Air Force Base their whole career. And so, there's a wide range of folks that do that. But each time, and no matter how long they're here for, they feel welcome, and it makes a difference. Because they could be in transition, they could be with their family, or they could be without their family. They could be away from home, they could be away from their unit, or they could be right here at home and with their unit. But it doesn't matter, they feel welcome in all areas. And that really makes a difference, because they're here to get valuable training regardless. And so, with our laboratory technicians as an example, we're one out of 12 Phase II sites, the very favorite one of all lab techs, I've talked to them. And we have them for about 13 months, and we graduate about eight a year. For nurses, it's a lot longer and a lot more in-depth, and so, they do hundreds of hours of practicum before they go out. And we graduate about 50 nurses, but they are fully qualified, ready for combat, and that's so important to us as an Air Force. For mission-ready airmen, think of crew chiefs, think of the folks that take care of the aircraft, it's so vital. We have crew chiefs that are assigned to each aircraft, they have their name on the side, and they are responsible for knowing and taking care of that airplane. And so, we train both F-16 and F-35 crew chiefs here, and we graduate about 810 a year. Many of them stay here, some of them go in other places, often ride into combat. And so, again, about 34 training days, so a little bit shorter for them, but a lot of them, and really important. We also have weapons directors. You think of folks that look at kind of radar screens, and they vector aircraft around, either to avoid collisions or to get us into the fight. And we graduate about 230 a year. And we are the only schoolhouse in the Air Force that does this particular training. And then, F-16, F-35, and F-15 pilots, generically, almost a half a year or more to train each one of those. 300 hours of academics, very rigorous, lots of simulator rides, oftentimes before you actually get to fly the real thing, which is good, because you often do it for the first time alone. And it's just really critical for all the facilities that we have, all go into producing these pilots. And we graduate about 490 a year. And that's really important, because right now, if you've read in the media, we are at about a 1,300 pilot deficit. And so, it takes many, many years to kind of dig out of that. But Luke is going to be on the forefront of that effort, and we appreciate your support in that vector. And then, this is just a little bit about coalitions. We talked about our great community and the partnership. So, these are the flags of all the nations that have either partnered on the F-35, or right now have said they would buy the F-35. And so, that's everybody across the entire program. On this next slide, I'm going to take away the flags of the nations that are not at Luke. Don't blink, because it's only a couple. Basically, the Navy, the Marines, and Great Britain. Everybody else is going to come or is already at Luke. And so, if you think about how we go to war today, it's many times through a coalition. And so, we're building partners. You talk about the South China Sea and deterring China, well, guess what? We're training Australian pilots, we're training Japanese pilots, we'll train South Korean pilots. That makes a pretty good team. Or if you talk in Russia, right now, we're training the Norwegians, the Italians, and we're going to be training the Danes here pretty soon. Again, another great team that really goes a long way to keeping kind of our enemies abroad and protecting freedom and justice worldwide. And then, last but not least, just really kind of a magnitude of impact of your support. And so, you can see, the Air Force plans to buy about 1,700 F-35s. The Marine Corps and the Navy will have about 300 or so. And then, after all of those major services, there's Luke Air Force Base with more F-35s than Great Britain and everybody else. And so, you will have a tremendous impact on our best fifth-gen, leading-edge fighter, and just the combat capability that it brings right here at Luke Air Force Base. And so, with that, I wanted to wrap it up with a quick video, and then I'd be glad to take any questions.
We are fighter pilots, aircraft maintainers, and healthcare providers. We are chaplains, engineers, technicians, security forces. We are combat-ready warfighters. We come from every part of the United States and nations all over the world. But we are all airmen with the same pride in our mission. And this is where we serve. We are Luke Air Force Base.
For this opportunity, I'd be glad, Mayor, to take any questions.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you. You know, as if we didn't already have enough pride in being Americans and living close to Luke Air Force Base, we certainly have a lot more now. And your humility is amazing, truly, for all that you do to protect our freedoms. So, I'm going to start with one question, and that is, you have the mission of protecting our freedoms, and you've changed from F-16 of protecting our freedoms, and you've changed from F-16 or added the 35. You've continued with the F-16s in there, right? So how has that changed the way you handle your mission?
Yeah, that's a great question. So what we did was, we took two F-16 squadrons, and we moved them to Holloman Air Force Base. And then obviously, we're replacing those with the F-35 squadrons. And so it, in many ways, hasn't changed at all, because you have a multi-role fighter. And so kind of, I would say, the everyday operations are pretty much the same, which is great, because that's inside of our DNA as a wing. But I would say, in another way, it's drastically changed. Because on the F-35, you have a very capable fighter. This is our fifth-generation fighter. A lot of its capability is protected by some very, I would say, complex secrets. Maybe that's a good way to put it. But we also do that alongside a lot of partners. And so it's an incredible mix of sharing information and protecting information, growing partnerships, yet growing our own Air Force capabilities, and then looking and trying to imagine where the F-35 will go. And so it does change it a little bit, in that what we're trying not to do is just say, the F-35 is a little bit better F-16. What we're trying to do and imagine is, where can this actually take us? And one of the most powerful things it's doing right now is building the coalitions, building the partnerships with other nations. And so we're really trying to leverage that here, inside of our training. We're trying to add layers to those relationships, and not just, hey, I've flown with you, I've studied with you. But how do we build relationships between the families that will last a long time, and we'll be able to leverage, you know, in the future? And so I would say it shifted our focus maybe to have a longer-range mindset, both in terms of dreaming about the capabilities and trying to prepare folks for those possibilities.
Wow. Right. Councilmember Patana.
Thank you, Mayor. And General, thank you for being here this evening. I enjoyed your presentation. One of my questions is occasionally, as councilpeople, we get calls from our constituents regarding noise, particularly when you're doing some night flying. My question is, I know that the F-35 is a little louder than the F-16 in terms of decibels. Is the base getting any pushback from noise issues? And if so, how do you deal with it?
Right. Great question. And so it is a lot louder than the F-16 when it's operating at full power. Because its engine is so powerful, we very rarely do that. We actually minimize the times where we actually use what we call afterburner. So if you've ever seen an aircraft take off, and you see the fire, the plume coming out the back end, it's in its full-max capability. And so we only do that when it's necessitated in training. And so we do try to minimize noise as much as we can. We have not seen an uptick at all in our noise complaints. And so when you look at historical averages, and kind of where those are geographically, we haven't really seen any change at all. In fact, a slight decrease. And again, I don't know if that's just a historical kind of dip or correction back to the average. We do deal with them very seriously when they come in, and we have a point of contact inside our Public Affairs Office that takes each one of those complaints. We try to understand exactly what happened. We try, we plot that on the map to see if maybe they're centered around a certain area where we could still accomplish our training, but avoid that area. And over the years, we've done a lot of that, where we've changed kind of how we come into the base, at what altitude, in what direction, because it didn't really cost us anything, but yet it saved on maybe some noise complaints. And so we try to work, we also try to explain. And then sometimes, we actually have to say, well, we weren't flying then, or in that place. And so we try to be an honest broker as well, because there are some rumored noise complaints that don't actually turn out to be factual complaints, either from us or, you know, in that vicinity at all. And so we try to balance that. But each one of those is concerning to me, because if someone is upset with what we're doing, that's something that we really take to heart, and we try to resolve that. But we also try to figure out the data and the details on how we can change, and then also inform if we have to.
Okay. Thank you. And my second question is, I'm sure that no one up here in this entire room has the same privilege that you do, and that is to fly the F-35. What's it like?
It is amazing. I'll tell you that much. It's interesting. In the F-16, I spent a lot of time trying to pull information. I would use my sensors to try to gather that information, and then I would have to think about it, and I would have to fuse it. In other words, put it all together to kind of figure out what exactly is going on, and what should I need to do about it. And the neat thing about the F-35 is, first of all, it's very easy to fly, but also it pulls in all that data, and it fuses it for you in a very powerful way. And so I find myself really being the person that's trying to push out information to the other portions of the flight, or the other aircraft I might be flying with. And so rather than always kind of trying to pull information, now I'm trying to get better at trying to push information. So that's one of the incredible things about the F-35. The other thing that I think is kind of the, one of the secrets, if you don't tell anybody, I'll share it with you. But there's a lot of tech, kind of technical pieces that, you know, you could probably go to Radio Shack, or, you know, in many ways, that technology is kind of out there. There's some closely guarded technology, but in general, a lot of the technology is out there. But what we can do with that technology is produce it on a very consistent rate, to not only train a lot of pilots, but if we had to produce combat power. And so the maintainability of the aircraft is also a very important part of the F-35. And so even though it's kind of in its growth phase, it's barely a toddler in terms of, you know, how it's going, but it's not a toddler in terms of its maturity. We've already had an initially operational-capable squadron up at Hill. This summer, we're going to exercise its capabilities to employ air-to-air and air-to-ground ordinance in very tactical scenarios. And so even though it's kind of young in age, it's already very developed. And so I'm excited to see where it goes. Because when I started flying the F-16 in 1994, right here at Luke Air Force Base, right after I got married, and came here with my wife, and just big-eyed, I'm going to fly the F-16, we had two missiles, we probably had five or six weapons we could drop. And then 23 later, years later, we have multiple, multiple weapons, and techniques, and pods, and just, you know, it grew tremendously. And so if the F-35 has made that much difference over its, you know, essentially, three years here at Luke Air Force Base, I can't imagine what it's going to do into the future. And we have started training those B coursers, so those initial pilots. And I carry baggage from the F-16, but they don't carry any baggage. And so I'm excited also to see where they take this program as well. So it's pretty amazing. You're welcome.
Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I just, excuse me, I just want to say too, how much I have enjoyed this presentation. Makes me feel so patriotic. I feel very patriotic every time I hear a jet out there. I, okay, I have a really long history with Luke Air Force Base. My dad was stationed there when it was Luke Field in 1942. And I was born while he was still stationed out there. And then when he, well, he didn't retire, you know, when his four years was up, he decided to live here. So, so many stories about Luke. He was a crew chief and worked on the airplanes. And so many stories. He loved the Air Force, he loved the, he loved the whole element of it, and was so proud and so patriotic. So I've really grown up with respect for Luke Air Force Base, and just really appreciate your presentation, and really appreciate their closeness to us, because I think it helps everyone here feel really safe as an American, knowing that you're training those kids really so well, and sending them out really prepared.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. That's wonderful.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I have to ask this question. I might have missed it in there, but how did, I think it's Lieutenant Luke, figure out how to bring the balloons down? This'll keep me up at night. I gotta ask.
So actually, he ended up, instead of kind of circling for a kill, actually did kind of the direct frontal assault. And so the gunners on the ground basically couldn't tilt their weapons at a high enough angle to continuously shoot at him. Extremely dangerous technique, but effective once you get within sight of certain range, and then you can take care of the balloon. And then, oh, by the way, the balloon will kind of explode after you shoot it, so you have to get away pretty quick as well. And so it was, I think, out of more courage than brain power, but he took them on.
Nice. Okay.
So, yep.
And then my second question, I was going to ask about a test ride in the F-35, but you said that it's a single-seater? Is that right?
Yes, sir. So you have to, we'd have to teach you how to fly first. So if you're okay with that, we could get you a ride.
I'd probably be better off in the backseat of maybe the F-16 or something. Okay, all right. I'm good now.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Well, again, we just are so thankful that you came here today, and we appreciate your service more than you can possibly know. We appreciate you keeping us safe and training those warriors every single day, because we need them. We need them, and we appreciate it more than I can possibly say in this short period of time. But we really thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. All right. And with that, then, we are adjourned until our 7:00 PM meeting.
The mayor and city council welcome you to the Peoria City Council meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. If you would like to address an issue that is on the agenda, or if you would like to speak to the council regarding a non-agenda item, please complete a speaker request form, which can be found in the front lobby of the Peoria City Council chambers, or in the tray to the left of the speaker's podium. Please place the completed speaker request form in the second tray to the left of the speaker's podium, labeled "Request to Speak." All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown clock is easily visible on the left side of the wall behind the city council dais. Only items listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of a speaker's request have not been listed on the agenda, and due to the requirements of open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms were received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council meeting.
Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Binzbacher.
The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Patanna.
Here.
Councilmember Binzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leone.
Here.
Council liaison Edwards.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council meeting of April 4th, 2017. We will begin this evening with a presentation, and I would like to invite Vice Mayor Edwards and Mrs. Lichter to meet me on the floor of the chambers, please.
Mrs. Lichter is surprised. She is unaware of why she's been called to the floor. But she so deserves this. She and her family have done so much for our community, and we would like to read a proclamation to let you know how much we appreciate everything that you do. Whereas, the office of the mayor and council recognizes the community support of the Lichter family, and whereas, the city of Peoria, Arizona is recognizing Peoria business owners Leo and Nancy Lichter, Chick-fil-A franchisees, for their unselfish partnership with the Peoria Police Department, and whereas, in 2016, the Lichters, through their Peoria Chick-fil-A franchise, donated meals, coupons, and bicycles for holiday events hosted by the Peoria Police Department, and whereas, the Lichters, through their Peoria Chick-fil-A franchise, partner with the Peoria American Legion Auxiliary Unit 62 for the benefit of veterans, and whereas, the Lichters open their restaurant each December to participants in the annual Shop With A Cop event, where everyone in the festive atmosphere is greeted by Santa Claus at the door and then the Lichter family, and whereas, the Lichters donate proceeds from fundraisers to the Peoria Police Citizens Academy Alumni Association for the support of community outreach events. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Carlet, Mayor of the city of Peoria, do hereby proclaim April 4th, 2017 as Recognition of the Lichter Family Community Partner Day. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Peoria, Arizona, to be affixed this fourth day of April, 2017. Thank you, thank you, we so appreciate you. She just said this is Leo's birthday. Thank you. We are really a fortunate city to have such wonderful people in the city of Peoria. So we will begin this evening with the consent agenda. Council, are there any items to be removed from consent?
Mayor, I'd like 12C removed, please.
12C? Alright, any other items? Alright, is there a motion on the consent agenda with the exception of item 12C?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Council, please vote. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now move on to the regular agenda and start with item 12C. Mr. Swenson?
Stuart Kent, our Public Utilities Director, will make a brief presentation on this item.
Good evening, mayor and council. Item 12C is a request for approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Peoria and Valley Metro for construction management services related to the proposed park and ride that will be built in the area of 83rd Avenue and Grand and Peoria Avenues. Council was previously briefed on this item in February this year, and we subsequently held an open house the next day to get citizen input, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Stuart. I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the public, just letting everybody know what hard work the city of Peoria and Valley Metro are doing to bring additional transportation needs to the city of Peoria. So I just wanted to thank you and your staff for being diligent and getting this to happen so quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have a motion?
No motion. Second.
Council, please vote. Item 12C passes unanimously. We will now move on to new business. Item 15R is a public hearing, minor general plan amendment, Olive Crossroads, 83rd Avenue and Olive Avenue. I will hear that in conjunction with item 16R, which is a public hearing also, rezoning Olive Crossroads, planned area development, 83rd Avenue and Olive.
Chris Hockes, our Planning and Community Development Director, will make a brief presentation on these two items.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, for your consideration, are two items. We have item 15R, this is a minor general plan amendment to redesignate a site from low-density residential to community commercial, and a companion rezone case, which would rezone the site from C2, which is intermediate commercial, and RM1, which is multifamily residential, to a commercial planned area development. The property in question, this is a vacant site of approximately 30 acres, located at the southwest corner of 83rd Avenue and Olive. Both applications were filed by the applicant Empire Residential Communities on behalf of the underlying landowner and developer, which is the Barclay Group. So the application is tonight, they seek to establish a grocery-anchored commercial center at the site, and so in a few slides later, I'll talk about what that development program looks like. Okay, the site's identified in red, and as I indicated, it's about roughly 30 acres in size. The site has frontage both on 83rd Avenue and Olive, but it also has frontage on 85th to the west. The site butts the existing AMF bowling alley along Olive Avenue. Contextually, looking at some of the land uses in the area, across Olive Avenue to the north and going clockwise, a single-family residential, there's a vacant field outside of the Shamrock Gas Station, which was entitled years ago for a multifamily development there. The northeast corner where it's vacant was entitled probably about the same timeframe for residential condos and mixed-use commercial and office. Looking east of the site, on 83rd Avenue, the Circle K was a recent development in the area, of course, Piner Park in that area, and then the bungalows on Olive, which is currently under construction, that's a multifamily development that's under construction right now. To the south and west of the area is the Piner Village and the West Green Estates, single-family residential communities. These communities came out of the ground and were developed in the mid-1980s, early 1990s, that timeframe. at the door, and then the Lichter family, and whereas the Lichters donate proceeds from fundraisers to the Peoria Police Citizens Academy Alumni Association for the support of community outreach events. Now therefore, I, Kathy Carlet, Mayor of the city of Peoria, do hereby proclaim April 4th, 2017 as Recognition of the Lichter Family Community Partner Day. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Peoria, Arizona, to be affixed this fourth day of April, 2017. Thank you, thank you, we so appreciate you. She just said this is Leo's birthday. We are really a fortunate city to have such wonderful people in the city of Peoria. So we will begin this evening with the consent agenda. Council, are there any items to be removed from consent?
Mayor, I'd like 12C removed, please.
12C? All right, any other items? All right, is there a motion on the consent agenda with the exception of item 12C?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Council, please vote. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now move on to the regular agenda and start with item 12C. Mr. Swenson?
Stuart Kent, our Public Utilities Director, will make a brief presentation on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 12C is a request for approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Peoria and Valley Metro for construction management services related to the proposed park and ride that will be built in the area of 83rd Avenue and Grand and Peoria Avenues. Council was previously briefed on this item in February this year, and we subsequently held an open house the next day to get citizen input, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Stuart. I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the public, just letting everybody know what hard work the city of Peoria and Valley Metro are doing to bring additional transportation needs to the city of Peoria. I just wanted to thank you and your staff for being diligent and getting this to happen so quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Council, please vote. Item 12C passes unanimously. We will now move on to new business. Item 15R is a public hearing, minor general plan amendment, Olive Crossroads, 83rd Avenue and Olive Avenue. I will hear that in conjunction with item 16R, which is a public hearing also, rezoning Olive Crossroads, planned area development, 83rd Avenue and Olive.
Chris Hockes, our Planning and Community Development Director, will make a brief presentation on these two items.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, for your consideration, are two items. We have item 15R. This is a minor general plan amendment to redesignate a site from low-density residential to community commercial, and a companion rezon case, which would rezone the site from C2, which is intermediate commercial, and RM1, which is multifamily residential, to a commercial planned area development. The property in question, this is a vacant site of approximately 30 acres located at the southwest corner of 83rd Avenue and Olive. Both applications were filed by the applicant, Empire Residential Communities, on behalf of the underlying landowner and developer, which is the Barclay Group. So the applications tonight, they seek to establish a grocery-anchored commercial center at the site, and so in a few slides later, I'll talk about what that development program Okay, the site's identified in red, and as I indicated, it's about roughly 30 acres in size. The site has frontage both on 83rd Avenue and Olive, but it also has frontage on 85th to the west. The site abuts the existing AMF bowling alley along Olive Avenue. Contextually, looking at some of the land uses in the area, across Olive Avenue to the north and going clockwise, a single-family residential, there's a vacant field outside of the Shamrock Gas Station, which was entitled years ago for a multifamily development there. The northeast corner where it's vacant was entitled probably about the same timeframe for residential condos and mixed-use commercial and office. Looking east of the site, on 83rd Avenue, the Circle K was a recent development in the area, of course Pioneer Park in that area, and then the bungalows on Olive, which is currently under construction, that's a multifamily development that's under construction right now. To the south and west of the area is the Pioneer Village and the West Green Estates single-family residential communities. These communities came out of the ground and were developed in the mid-1980s, early 1990s, that timeframe. Overall, contextually looking at the site, the site is located in an area with recent development interest, as I noted. 83rd Avenue, as you know, is a principal arterial, it provides primary access north and south through the city of Peoria. Also, as you know, bus, future bus route will be extended from Phoenix to the south, north up to Arrowhead Mall, and so with this site, you'll see that bus bays is part of the site plan that's being contemplated. Okay, this graphic illustrates the existing general plan designation for the site on the left, and on the right is the existing zoning. So the general plan identifies what is contemplated, what is envisioned for the future, and the zoning identifies what can be built today, what's in place today. So if you look at the general plan land use map first, the site is designated as low-density residential. This is essentially a suburban residential category, densities between 2 to 5 units per acre, and it's typified by lots generally between 8,000 and 12,000 square feet, and very similar to what you see south and west of the site. I'll note that the residential designation that you see on the screen doesn't align with the zoning or perhaps the built environment in the area. You'll note that the bowling alley is designated residential when it's, you know, a commercial use. If you look to the right, the zoning map, and you look at the area in red, the site, the site is split-zoned today. About 65% to 70% of the site is currently zoned C2, intermediate commercial. This is the city's most common zoning district, allows everything from retail, grocery stores, gas stations, and the like. And then you'll notice the area in brown that straddles Pioneer Village to the south, that area is zoned multifamily residential. So that zoning's been in place on this property, probably the mid-1980s was when that zoning was put in place, for really for the last 30 years or so. The development and conditions in the area have changed, as I noted. Probably the biggest change that I believe to be in place is the Pioneer Park that was developed a few years ago. If you look at the general plan map on the left, Pioneer Park is in purple, which is a business park industrial category. So I think with that change, with Circle K that developed, not as business park but as commercial, that changed the conditions in the area, and so when we looked at the bungalows project last year, I think we saw multifamily as a better edge, better fit adjacent to the park than an industrial or a business park there. So some of the conditions in the area have changed. This is an area that's probably not well-served by local commercial activity, and as I indicated, the site doesn't match up with the zoning that we have in place that they could build today. So I want to talk to you briefly about the conceptual development plan that you see. As I mentioned, this is a grocery-anchored shopping center, so the anchor is intended to be Fry's Marketplace, 107,000, 188 square feet in size. This is a much larger footprint than the existing Fry's at 91st and Olive, that's about 62,000 square feet, which is a facility, by the way, that they currently lease at that location. Moreover, the marketplace format, as you're familiar with, has not only a larger foreplate, but it has apparel, dry goods, pharmacy, and fuel sales, so it's a much, much larger format. There is also a five-acre future piece, it's identified in brown, that's the part of the site that abuts 85th Avenue to the west. That's a future portion of the development. There's no determination of what that use is going to be today, so in the future, when it is identified, they'll have to come through a site plan review, but it is part of the zoning case here. In terms of the phasing of the project, it's contemplated that the Fry's, along with the shops that are connected to it, and the fuel center would occur first, and then right after that would be the inline shops that you see along Olive. If you look at the corner of Olive and 83rd, what's contemplated there is an emergency care or an urgent care with emergency care services, and then restaurant pads along 83rd. So that would occur soon after the Fry's is constructed. So in talking about the, with the front door along Olive, what I've also indicated here on the screen are access considerations. So you'll see the little dots along 83rd and Olive. The dots in yellow, that is a restricted access point into the site, that's what we call right-in, right-out, so there's a little pork chop that defines how you can access, how you can ingress and egress to the site. And then where you see a green dot, that means full access, that means you have a median break and you can enter and exit the site without restriction. And then there's some dots in white, and those are areas that there's still communication with the applicant, along with the traffic impact that we're looking, analysis that we're looking at, in line with the site plan that's currently under review. So those access considerations are still being refined. We believe that there might be a light at 85th someday, which we would ask the applicant to contribute towards that light. On 85th, the access point to 85th would not occur with the initial development of the Fry's, but when that area in brown develops, that's when that access point would occur going to 85th Avenue. And then finally, in terms of building placement, this is really important, again, this is a center that abuts existing residential communities, so the building placement and the buffer considerations are very important. And so what I'll do is talk about that on the next few slides. So this is, what you're looking at here is the Fry's anchor, and looking at that edge with the single-family neighborhood to the south. So what you see in green, that is the landscape buffer, that is a 30-foot landscape buffer, and what the planned area development here allows us to tailor the standards a little bit, so what's been done with this PAD is we've gone beyond the standard zoning requirements for the tree count and the shrub count that's required. So there is a 25% increase in the number of trees that are required to occur in that buffer, there's also a doubling of the amount of shrubs that are required, and then also to deter any potential undesirable activity of folks that might be behind the Fry's, there's also going to be planting of what they call hostile vegetation. Essentially, it's all the thorny plants that you might see, that you might not want to touch or walk around, but that'll be part of that edge condition to deter activity back there. The blue line indicates the building setback. Typically in our zoning code, we see a 30-foot building setback as well. In this case, the minimum setback for the PAD for the anchor store is going to be 77 feet, that's the minimum that the anchor store can be. I will note that the actual setback is about 158.9 feet to the nearest point, and that's, that would be with the buildout of the Fry's until the future shops builds to the west of the Fry's anchors right there. And then continuing, the line that you see in gold, that's the future five-acre parcel, that's just to indicate that the building setback and the landscape buffer would be 30 feet in that location. So that's just to illustrate that edge condition. Another thing we wanted to look at with the applicant is through a sightline evaluation, we wanted to understand what that view would look like relative to the massing of the structure, and so that was where there was a push to try to move the structure back as far as possible to try to not interrupt those sightlines. So what this graphic is trying to illustrate is, from the vantage point of a single-family home, if you look to the structure, look to the right where you have that, the red box, that's the Fry's grocery store, the box that's right next to it that's in blue, that's the future inline shops that would develop sometime, sometime out in the future. So this indicates what the, based on the setback and what, and based on the landscape requirements that we have in place, what that vantage point you would see from that residential structure, and that's the nearest residential structure from that area of change. So just to demonstrate that, I think with these conditions that have been placed through the PAD, that it mitigates some of those sightline concerns that might occur. I indicated that the site plan is currently under review, and therefore the elevations are also a little fluid at this point, but I will, wanted to provide these to try to illustrate what's been submitted so far, so we're still working with the applicant on the complete execution of how the, how the shops and the Fry's marketplace will look, but just to give you kind of a flavor of what's intended here. As you know, all rezoned and general plan cases go through a notification process. We provide notification at the onset, at the onset of a case, and also prior to a public hearing, and we have a notice of hearing, postcards have been sent out, all property owners within 600 feet, and all registered HOAs within one mile, that is the notification radius we use. Through the course of the case, we've gotten two phone calls and one email in opposition. The phone calls and email came from two separate individuals. The concerns that they noted in those, in that correspondence, perceived lack of need for a grocery store in the area, there was concern that with additional commercial in the area, that that might have an impact on the park with more vandalism, and also the potential to increase traffic noise and crime in the area. So those were the concerns that we heard from those individuals. We do require a neighborhood meeting that was held on October 12th at Cotton Bowl Elementary. We had approximately 15 attendees there, including the councilperson for the district and the assistant. The concerns that were voiced at that meeting, there was surprise from a lot of the neighbors that there was even multifamily zoning adjacent to their property, so when they found out, they were very surprised about that and actually happy that something other than multifamily would be developing there, so that was one thing we heard. There were concerns about 85th Avenue and about the potential for neighborhood cut-through traffic to occur through their neighborhood, and then there was also concerns about the proximity of the anchor building to single-family, so I went through some of the landscaping and sightline enhancements that were provided, but those are the things we heard at that meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on March 2nd, 2017. We didn't have any speakers from the public present, and at that meeting, after deliberation, the commission unanimously recommended approval. So based on the key findings, we believe that the change in area character supports a change in land use, we believe that the commercial designation on the general plan is a better reflection of the development needs in the area, and is in alignment with the majority of the underlying zoning and the built environment of the area, and as far as the rezon's concerned, this case would retain not only the services but the sales tax at what we believe to be an appropriate commercial intersection. And we believe also the PAD standards have been tailored to maximize compatibility. And so with that, Mayor, available for any questions?
Thank you. Council, any questions? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Chris. That was a great presentation. I wonder if you could flip back, I don't know how many slides it was, to something that would show 85th Avenue, where the bowling alley is, and then down?
The site, the area?
There, that's good. I was at that meeting, as you said, and let me just say, I think this is an amazing project. This is long overdue, and I'm just ecstatic that it's coming in with the bungalows on Olive. I do want to point out that a grocery store in this area is very necessary. We live in what's called a food island, or a food desert. I know the Fry's is down at 91st, it's an under, it's an old Fry's, so it underserves, and then there's nothing, you know, there's nothing here, so it's very, very welcome. But I have heard from a few residents that they are still concerned a little bit about this 85th Avenue, because as you well know, it's a half-street anyway. So from, from the back of the bowling alley, which is what this looks like, I'm sure it is, down to where this property ends, I think one thing they're worried about is light, streetlights or whatever would be there to make the property, the Fry's property safe, would shine in their bedrooms or that would cause an irritation to them, and also that the site would be, because it's not actually, it's the part that's to be built out, that there will be vagrants hanging out there because of easy access. Can you just address what you've done, or what the applicant has done to make that go away?
Certainly. Councilmember Hunt, a couple considerations with the question about the light. The, as I indicated, that frontage of 85th Avenue will be required to be, the half-street improvements will be required to be constructed when the Fry's comes in, so curb, gutter, landscaping, streetlights as well, so they will be in place to match up with the other conditions in the area. With, relative to the concern for people loitering around on the unbuilt parcel, there will be landscape requirements that are put in place, and maybe I indicated on that one of those screens there.
Those unfriendly plants.
Correct. That will be part of that to hopefully deter people from being over there.
Okay. I just wanted to stress that again and bring it up to the surface, so that if those people with concerns are listening, those will be allayed. Okay, again, I think the applicant has done a very good job. Thank you, Mr. Plessy, and you guys have done a great job, and I am totally in favor because I can't wait.
Councilmember Finn?
Thank you. Chris, can you go forward just a few slides to the line of sight? Yeah, it's probably me, I'm getting really old. I can't read those numbers on there. Can you just help for the public and myself, who's blind as a mole? Ah, gotcha, didn't I?
Yeah. So what that is indicating is, I'm talking to the mic here, is from the back of that residence, and that distance, if I can read this correctly, I want to say is about to the existing Fry's store to that vantage point is, I know we have this graphic somewhere in the packet here, but I believe it says 100 and, yeah, let me give you a right answer here, I think it's like 180 feet. Hang on one second. But as I mentioned while I'm looking for it, here we go, I found it right here. Okay. Okay, so what that graphic shows, line of sight exhibit, from that point, from vantage point A, from where that person is standing to the Fry's grocery store is 197 feet, but as I mentioned, the area, the blob in blue, is what intended to be in the future of additional shops, that's not contemplated as part of Phase 1, but in the future. So that vantage point would then be 117 feet from where that person is standing with the future shops, and so what this graphic is trying to demonstrate with the 30-foot buffer, along with the minimum 77-foot setback, and the limit, the 36-foot height limitation of the building, what that person's vantage point would be from the closest edge from residential to the back. And it's trying to demonstrate that with all those factors, that the view is not interrupted.
Thank you.
So what they will be seeing is the landscaping?
Correct.
Okay. Council, any other comments or questions? All right, so I declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to address this issue? Anyone in the audience? All right, seeing none, I will, I declare this.
Thank you. One.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please come down to the podium. Mr. Dibler, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, hi, I am James Dibler. I live on 3730 West Tucky Lane, Phoenix, Arizona, 85019. I support the new development of Fry's Marketplace coming to 83rd Avenue, Olive. It will bring more restructuring jobs into the area. It will bring more shops into the area. It will bring economic growth to the area. This project will be accessible for years to come. Thanks for no, come, thanks for no subjection.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Are there any further comments? All right, seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Council, any further discussion?
Let me make a motion.
I am going to need a motion on each of these individually, so can I have a motion on item 15R?
I move that we accept item 15R.
And a second?
Second.
All right, council, please vote. And item 15R passes unanimously, and we will now move to item 16R.
I move we accept item 16R.
And a second?
Second.
And item 16R also passes unanimously. Thank you so much. We will now move on to call to the public for non-agenda items, and I do have one speaker request form from Mr. James Dibler. Sir, I think we have your name and address already, so you can begin with your comments at any time.
Okay. Hello, I am James Dibler. I am going to school at Arizona State University. I graduated from Glendale Community College with my associate's degree and photography certificate in 2015. There is a power line bending down between 83rd Avenue and Peoria to 87th Avenue and Peoria. The power company needs to fix their problem before it's begin a lull. a liability for people walking south on Peoria Avenue. Arizona Public Service is not doing a, a elegant job fixing and replacing power lines in the city. The economy is doing well with new jobs coming to the West Valley. I would like to see the city of Peoria annex some city in order to bring a new tax revenue to our city and improve city services such as the fire department and police department. I heard on the news this afternoon that Maricopa County Sheriff, Paul Penzone, is selling down Ten City due to the work conditions of the detention officers when they work outside in the heat. Ten City has became a media circuit on the news and doesn't save taxpayers money. MCSO would help to save 4.4 million by closing Ten City and by moving inmates to more safer jails within Maricopa County. Finally, the city of Peoria is doing a great job keeping its citizens safe and bringing new ideas to the forefront. Thank you for no time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. We will now move on to reports from City Manager, Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. Just a couple of reports for me tonight, and the first will be given by Jen Stein, our Communications Director. While Jen's coming down, just a little bit on this, and this, of course, is an update on the identity program. The council is very familiar with the, the rollout of our new identity program. You see the first slide coming out. We have buttons, pins, banners around the community. Until recently, the only flag that we've had is the prototype in the conference room for several months that the, that the council uses. We now have them available in the community, and Jen's going to give you an update. Jen?
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Well, we are very excited about the unveiling of the first city official flag, which was unveiled at the mayor's State of the City last week. And we wanted to provide some background and also share an educational video. First, this all ties together as part of the Office of Communications imaging plan, which we started about a year ago. So you might be familiar with the tourism campaign called See Yourself in Peoria. That's initially what we worked on, and part, our biggest part of this goal was to create a universal image to represent our key elements and incorporate it into various marketing outlets. Actually, you can tell, a lot of these elements were unveiled slowly throughout the last year. And essentially, the image transformed into the official city flag, and this is the culmination of that effort. We are fortunate to have a very talented graphic designer on staff. Mike Iverson has diligently worked to create various treatments and applications to showcase these key elements. Again, probably most of you are familiar with the street banners that are positioned in Old Town on the left. We also have lobby posters, which reflect the key messaging, See Yourself in Peoria in different formats. And our collateral materials as well, Sustain and Gain is another example, where you're starting to see the image. And then we have multiple giveaway items that feature this picture and the, the key elements. But first, I do want to back up a little bit, because before this started, citizens have been sharing what Peoria means. And that's been really important. As we gain that feedback, we've been paying close attention to what they're saying. And that is a, as a tribute to our citizens, we have taken their words, and we've molded it into a powerful symbol that has represented the past, present, and future. Probably this looks familiar as well. This is the last year's booth at the city conference booth for League of Cities and Towns. And this represents our online media, which is our website and our VisitPeoria site as well. And the good news is residents are very excited about this new look, they, in the flag. In fact, we have received so much feedback on a daily basis. We have had about 166 likes. We had 39 shares, 38 comments, which is phenomenal feedback. Many citizens have asked us how they can purchase this flag. They want to proudly display this flag in their yards or at their home. And we're taking those requests right now. And another interesting and fun request is people want to buy merchandise. They actually want to see products with this flag image featured. So we're exploring that option right now. And I'm taking any, any suggestions, because I've, I've heard beach towels, to t-shirts, to ties. So, we are again exploring an online company store where residents can have the opportunity to purchase merchandise with this imagery. But it's really great to see the favorable reaction from the community. And with that, we'll go ahead and start the video.
More than 170,000 people call Peoria, Arizona, home. As a vibrant and dynamic city that continues growing, Peoria is constantly evolving. A fundamental element of a city's brand is its flag. The city of Peoria has flown its seal on a white background up to this point. But a lively and dynamic city needs an official flag. By incorporating the thoughts and values of what Peoria means to residents, we were able to create a meaningful design that reflects the beauty and vibrancy of Peoria. Obviously, Peoria aspired for nothing less than a great flag. But what makes a flag great? The North American Vexillological Society, a nonprofit organization dedicated to the study of flag history and symbolism, published a booklet by Ted Kay titled Good Flag, Bad Flag: How to Design a Great Flag, in which he identifies five basic principles for designing a great flag. One, keep it simple, so simple a child can drive from memory. Two, use meaningful symbolism. Three, use two to three basic colors. Four, no lettering or seals of any kind. Five, be distinctive or be related. Guided by these five principles for flag design, the city of Peoria is proud to unveil its new official flag. This flag features bold, clean shapes, and fluid, active movement, and colors that portray Peoria's own palette, the rust and browns of the Sonoran Desert, and the mountains all around us, the blues of the waters of our own Lake Pleasant, and the Arizona skies. The colors blend together as all Peorians are unified, from one end of our city to the other, from the first citizen to the last, in the shared blessing of our cherished home. Three stars represent Peoria's past, present, and future. They illustrate our shared principles, the courage of the founding pioneers, the strength of the men and women who helped shape Peoria into a modern city, and the pride that propels our city forward to reach its greatest potential. The city of Peoria can now proudly say that it has a great flag. It's bold, it's distinctive, it's Peoria.
Thank you, Jen. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
The next item I have is an update on the accreditation or reaccreditation process in our Public Works area. Stuart Kent is back, Public Works and Utilities Director. And this is something I'm really proud of. The, the city is, as we talked about last week in the budget process, is accredited in all four of the main areas that a municipal government can be accredited in, police, fire, Public Works, and Parks and Recreation. And just two weeks ago, we received our reaccreditation in Public Works, and Stuart's going to talk about that. Stuart?
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Mayor and Counsel, again, good evening. Next to me, and I'll, I'm going to point out why Tricia's here in particular, is Tricia Bowling. Tricia is the Executive Assistant to Public Works Utilities, and I'm going to call her out in a minute and embarrass her, so give you all a chance. But again, as Carl mentioned, on March 22nd, Peoria Public Works Utilities Department was notified that it will be reaccredited by the American Public Works Association. There are, as a way of background, 153 agencies across the country that are accredited. Arizona has five, Peoria being one of them. The others include within the state, ADOT, the City of Chandler, Mojave, and Coconino Counties. The evaluation team reviewed 169 different practices that are applicable to Peoria, and we received a 100% rating score for those 169 practices. In addition, four of our practices were considered best practices, or what they call model practices, and will be shared with other agencies around the country. And those included our ethics training, our standard operating procedure format for our documents internally, our household hazardous waste collection program, and our integrated water, wastewater master plan. I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the work of the Public Works and Utility staff in 2009 and 13, when Peoria was originally accredited, and then the first reaccreditation that occurred then. Those were the folks that really blazed the trail, and I've had the opportunity to sort of continue that good work. Secondly, I want to thank the Mayor and Counsel, Mr. Swenson and his leadership team, and all the departments and the organization for the assistance. While I'm up here tonight, fundamentally, every department, from Human Resources, the Attorney's Office, Communications, all of them, had a role to play, and in some way were interviewed during that two-and-a-half-day review period. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge the managers from Public Works and Utilities, who could be here tonight, and many of them are hiding up in the back section there, that could come down tonight, because they are frankly the real heroes of this effort. And then immediately to my left is Tricia. Tricia was, I essentially gave her the responsibility when she came to us about six months ago, to sort of carry the water on this and go forward. So, she sort of stepped in with a very positive attitude and very helpful to really bring all our efforts together, because it's coordinating all these different departments and all their reports back to the APWA. So, on behalf of the entire department, I want to thank you, and again, thank you all for your recognition. And when we have the official award, we'll make sure to get some pictures and everything. It should be another month before we actually get it.
So, I just have one question. Did you, did I hear you right in saying that you received 100% score, a score, perfect score?
Mayor, yes. We received, out of the 169 things that we are, that are applicable to Peoria, we received 100% score on those, yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's incredible. You should all be very, very proud. We are very proud of you. Thank you all for everything that you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Thank you. The last item I have is a- Of course, you need to get the applause. The last item I have is a feature for the council meeting of, the first one in the month, where we do a, a video of the upcoming events.
The last of Peoria's pop-up dinner parties will be held Friday, April 14. Come out for delicious foods from specialty food trucks, and stay for the live music and games, held in Old Town Peoria, from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. The whole family will enjoy candy hunts for children, meeting Mr. and Mrs. Bunny, inflatables, games, make and take crafts, a petting zoo, pony rides, and more, at the 41st anniversary of the Dolly Sanchez Memorial Easter Egg Hunt on Saturday, April 15, from 8 a.m. to noon, at the Peoria Sports Complex. Admission and parking are free when you bring a donation of canned food. Food and beverages will be available for purchase. Join Peoria's Party for the Planet events on Saturday, April 22. First, volunteer to help keep Planet Earth looking great by participating in the annual New River and Trail Cleanup at 7 a.m. Each year, volunteers and staff remove tons of trash and debris in a section of New River and its trail, then plan to attend the Planet Palooza Earth Day Festival at 5 p.m. at West Wing Park. Peoria's Last Park Fest of the Season will be held April 29 at Fletcher Heights Park. Enjoy a free showing of the movie Zootopia, along with games, kids' activities, bike helmet fittings, and food, from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. For more information on any of these great events, call 623-773-7137, or visit www.poriaaz.gov/specialevents.
And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. We will now move on to reports from the City Council, and we'll start with Youth Council Liaison, Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Bear with me, I'm kind of losing my voice today. I attended last week the PUSD School Boundary Committee meeting at Sunrise Mountain, where over 100 people were there voicing their concerns about the reboundry of the school district. And that was just so amazing to see so many people come out and how, and be involved in their community and voicing their opinions. And it was just, it was just a great experience. For me, for, I also attended on the first, the Arts and Cultural Festival here in Peoria with a few of my friends, and we had an amazing time at that. That was so amazing. And I also want to say something about our new flag. I know that's been a big process for the last just so many months. And I'm so happy to see that it's finally being released, and I'm going to be proud to see that all around our city. So, thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselmember Patana?
Thank you, Mayor. On March 24th, I had the opportunity to speak at the Glendale Community College Veteran Services Center, their grand opening. What this is, it's a new 3,000-square-foot building that helps our veterans transition from military life to civilian life. They help them out with getting involved in school and helping, helping them set their, you know, their, what classes they're going to take. And the interesting thing about it, one of the interesting things about it is the, if you have a combat veteran coming in, into the school, the instructors are trained to understand if they're having special issues, and then they're trained to deal with it. So, it makes it easier for them to transition from military life to civilian life and get through, get through school. I mentioned to them that Peoria likes to recognize and support the veterans, and I invited them to come to see our Veterans Memorial. And I can't wait for them to see it next year, because the Veterans Memorial will be spectacular. On March 25th, I attended a celebration to recognize the West Valley being honored as a 2017 Great American Defense Community at the Goodyear Ballpark, where the Chicago White Sox and the Cleveland Indians played. We were able to get on the field and for some of the festivities, and it was a, it was a really nice day. And then on March 28th, I attended the Mayor Kathy Carlet's State, my third State of the City event. And every year, the mayor's speech inspires me to want to be a better councilman, and this year certainly was no different. Her speech talked about the 2016 accomplishments, and all of you know there were many of those. It also included our goals for next year as well. And I think her speech made it very clear what a great city Peoria is. So I'd like to thank the mayor for your inspiration, for your leadership, and your dedication to making Peoria the great city that it is. Thank you. Thanks and congratulations to Stuart Kent. I, I worked at an agency many years ago that had to be accredited. It is no easy task. It's very difficult to get accreditation, and we have several departments in this city that are accredited. And what that really means is our departments are working at a very high level. And certainly, that high level reflects on the service to our citizens. So congratulations to you, Stuart. And last, I would also like to talk a little bit about our flag. I think it's a great, something great for our city, kind of brings us into this century. I particularly like the colors, the mountains, the skies, the water, Lake Pleasant. But I also like the stars that represent the past, the present, and the future. The past, we'll never forget in Peoria. The present, where we live in today, and the future, which is where our flag will take us for, for many years to come. So I think it's a great addition to our city, and Jen, great job on that. So, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselmember Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to congratulate you on your State of the City address. You made us all proud. It was a fantastic presentation, and a great turnout. I think it was somewhere around 380 people or something. All there interested in Peoria, and what's happening in Peoria, our successes, and where we're going, and that just speaks volumes. So, thank you for that. Also, congratulations to Public Works on your accreditation. One of many, of course, in the city of Peoria that we're so proud of, but 100%, that is pretty remarkable. So congratulations to all of you, the management team, for doing such a great job and making us proud. Also, congratulations to Economic Development, particularly Scott White, on a fantastic presentation- presentation at last week's investor forum. It was the second annual investor forum, and just really was a fantastic opportunity for interested investors to come from all over to look at who Peoria is and what we have to offer. And Scott did a fantastic job of presenting that with the help of communications, and just the whole package was top-notch. Great presentation from, from GPEC, and it was very impressive. So I look forward to great things coming of that. Also want to comment on the flag. I'm hearing fantastic feedback about that, that flag. And to echo Councilmember Patena's remarks about the colors, what they represent, the past, the present, the future, it's just very important to know where we came from, who we are today, and where we want to go. And that flag says it all. It will be part of our legacy forever, and I'm very proud of it. Love the feedback that I'm getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, let's see, on the 22nd, I had the opportunity of going to the Friends of the Public Library Annual Ladybug Release. They, they had 200 young adult, or young kids that were signed up to attend the event. When I got there, there were over 365 students. And so they, and that was just in the first showing. They had another one in the afternoon. The enthusiasm and the, the spirit of the event just every year seems to grow, and ladybugs everywhere. I think I brought home five that were inside my shirt or under my neck someplace, but it was just an amazing event. These kids learned a lot about, about bugs, and they had the ladybug there doing a daytime story, so it was really kind of neat. The next day, I was back at the library judging Lego Fest, and they had about 25 students that had entries ranging from houses to rocket ships to Jedi replicas. The judging was very difficult, but we had a great time doing it. I also had the opportunity to attend your State of the City. Not only is your dedication and your leadership to the city, but I want every resident to know that our mayor works every single day tirelessly to promote our city and bring the best amenities that she possibly can to every resident of the city, and I truly mean that.
Thank you.
I attended the Peoria Investment Forum, and like Councilman Binsbacher said, the enthusiasm and the amount of interest that was there was phenomenal. Peoria definitely has so many things to offer, and people all over the country, I believe, are recognizing the fact that Peoria is the place to be, and I think we're going to see some great opportunities within the near future of exactly how hard Scott and his team are trying to bring businesses and industry to Peoria. And then lastly, last week, I had the opportunity to attend my monthly lunch with a councilman over at Kellis High School. We had about 50, 15 students there along with staff. And again, it just never ceases to amaze me, the ideas and the, the questions that these young individuals of Peoria have for their elected officials. And so I have actually quite a few tasks that I, action items that I have to get back with some questions, so I look forward to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Finn?
Thank you very much. Public Works, Stuart, very nice job. Again, 100%, I generally call you an overachiever, but we're kind of used to that now and what we do in Peoria. We continue to overachieve, and I especially appreciate the fact that you're giving your team the acknowledgement for that. I'm sure that means a lot to them, so congratulations to all of you on a job very, very well done. I also wanted to once again thank the entire team for the budget presentation last week. I thought it was absolutely phenomenally done, well thought out, just as usual, a fantastic job by, by all, and that is just greatly appreciated, because I know that those can just be a nightmare sometimes to, to get through, and you guys just do such an amazing job. I can't thank you enough for the hard work that you guys put into that. Quick reminder, there is a shred-a-thon that is going to be going on at Centennial High School on the 15th that the district is, or I'm sorry, I am helping sponsor there in conjunction with the Tyler Walsh Scholarship Fund. So anyone who'd like to stop by and bring some of those documents that you need to get rid of, please, please stop by. I wanted to thank General Leonard for stopping by today. I thought he did an absolutely amazing presentation. I have to admit, I was just completely engrossed in this thing, and I thought it was a phenomenal presentation. But it, it just made me reflect on the fact that sometimes we forget to think about all the people that are out there protecting us every single day, day and night, and that goes to our police and fire here as well. So I try to thank everyone that protects us on a daily basis and allows us to continue to live the free lives that we live. So wanted to take that opportunity now. It seemed like a very opportune time with General Leonard coming by. I also wanted to thank, I know I'm going on and on, I apologize, I wanted to thank once again the city and the school district for working so well together. If you didn't know, there was some picketing that happened on Monday, and I know that our city worked so well with the district on what's the best approach to this, and I think it went off pretty much without a hitch. But I will say, I have the utmost respect for all of the Centennial students that stood out there and did a very peaceful little protest of their own, and just showed their support for caring for one another and not falling into that, that message that was going on there. And I won't even acknowledge their name of who they were out there, who was out there picketing. And finally, congratulations on the flag. I thought that was very, very well done. It's a great flag, and I'm, I'm really happy. It was a great, great job. Appreciate that very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, so many things in this city to be thankful for, aren't there? We could just go on and on. Luke Air Force Base, our award-winning departments here. I think you got an A, right? Was that in honors class? I'm sure it was. Mrs. Lecter, I want to thank you again. And in addition to you and the wonderful contributions that you and your family make to kids, I'd say mostly, but to other aspects of our community, I want to extend that even further. We have so many community partners, and they don't have to help us, but, but they give and give and give when they're asked. They, they donate, they make our festivals better, they make kids happy. And that's really what it's about, is serving the needs of kids. And so out there to all of you who are community partners and have volunteered time, or money, or product, thank you from each and every one of us. I had the privilege on Sunday morning, twice, to speak at the historic First Presbyterian Church here in downtown Peoria. It is 125 years old. I ask if anybody who was there at the groundbreaking was present, and I didn't get anybody, but I know some of them, their families were there in the beginning. And it's a historic church that still reaches out. In fact, they sponsor the Heart Pantry, and I made the point of telling them that they're not only a, an old congregation, an old church, but they keep in the times, 10 years ago, nobody would have known that there would be a need to feed homeless teenagers. And yet, they knew it, and they've stepped up, and they provide weekend meals for homeless kids. So I respect that church and what it means in this community. I too attended everything that they all said. I won't repeat them. We keep pretty busy. The budget, I, I do just want to say on that, it takes months. In fact, I think, didn't they say they're starting like the minute we adopt it, they're starting on next year's? Because it's mammoth. And what it reflects, I don't get all the numbers, I'll be honest, those are way bigger than anything in my paradigm. But what I understand are the wishes of council reflecting the wishes and the needs of their constituents. And so we also spend months determining, what do we really want to ask for? We need to prioritize, and, and we also need to work with each other and understand that each of us is not going to get everything we want for our constituents, for our district, that there's a finite amount of money and that it has to go around. But I do want you as, as our folks out there, our neighbors, to know that each of us has submitted things that we think reflect your needs and your wishes, and as much as possible, you're going to be seeing those improvements made in our city. Okay, and last thing that I want to mention, in the video about the flag, which, by the way, I, I love the flag too, who could not? It was mentioned that a flag should represent the strength of the pioneers who shaped it, and that flag definitely does that. But I also have sad word tonight, sad note is that Priscilla Cook, who, if you've been in the city any time at all, you know that wonderful, wonderful lady, a pioneer of Peoria. She passed away yesterday morning, about 2:30 in the morning. She had had a stroke the week before and had been in hospice care. I'm, I'm not sure her exact date. I think it's '94, and I think she was going to turn 95 in May. I know May's her birthday. She, she did so many things in the beginning. She was, her family were farmers and owned a lot of this property around here, and then she married a farmer. So she had dirt under her fingernails from day one. She cared passionately about Peoria, her family, but Peoria. She, and she worked tirelessly. As I said, if there's anybody who's been here any time at all, you remember her. She would speak before commissions, she would speak before council. She was not shy. She extracted promises from some of us that we wouldn't, right, Mayor? That we wouldn't have promised anybody else, and we didn't want to promise it, but it was Priscilla. And she would take a hold of your arm with her tiny little fingers, and somehow you melted, and you knew what she was asking for was good. So I, I don't even think I can express how much she will be missed in this community, but, but she's definitely a pioneer who shaped Peoria, and her legacy will live on for a very long time. Unfortunately, we don't have news yet of her arrangements, but I think if you watch the paper, I, I think maybe it'll be printed tomorrow, or if not, the very next day. So I think that concludes my comments.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Leonie?
Yes, thank you. I just got one thing to say. I went to the, on April 1st, I went to the Festival of Downtown Peoria, the Azza Festival. It was a great festival. This is one of the, the big ones that we have, and we had a, a lot of people there, a lot of kids there, a lot of entertainment going on, a lot of music, and a lot of food. And this is something that we must keep, keep it going, and I do want to say that everybody had a great time, and I know I brought my grandkids down here, and they just loved it. So I just want to say that I think it was great, and the kids had a great time, and like I said before, let's keep this festival going, because it's very important to the city of Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you. And last week was a really, really busy week, as you can, as you can gather from all of the comments made here tonight. We had the State of the City, we had the Peoria Investment Forum, and we did our budget hearings. All of those gave our citizens and our business community an opportunity to have a, a look behind the curtain at what goes on in the city of Peoria, and what we're planning to do, and all that we have to offer. And I could not have been more proud of how we carried off every single one of those events, so that everybody who saw understood the real treasure that is the city of Peoria. So I would like to thank our city staff and our city manager, and everyone who was involved in all of this, because it was, it was first-rate. Every single time that we touched anything in the city of Peoria, it was first-rate last week. So I would just like to thank you. Those are all really, really big events that have a lot of planning to it, and could, could show us as at not our best. That's possible, but that's not what happened. We were, we really came out looking like, as classy as we truly are. So thank you all for everything that you did to make sure that that happened. And with that, we are adjourned.